Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. Quick pledge allegiance to the flag. Can you get hold me?
No.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all for coming. Mac and Steve have got more or less a final draft here, so in a second, I'm going to turn it right over to them. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 26, 2018.
Come on.
Second.
Discussion. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Indianapolis, thank you. Okay. Mac, Steve?
Just thought we'd mention, as you know, we've had three weeks in between these two last meetings, and usually four. Right after last meeting, that this group made several changes that you see highlighted in yellow in this version, we sent that to Chris Lynch. Week later, she got back to us with some suggestions. We made a few other little fixes, sent it back to her, and we got something back from her Friday after we'd already sent out these documents. So we ended up with a conference call with her this morning and worked on a couple of other things. So you'll see that Steve is going to take us through this. We have left out this section on leases and this section on withdrawal, that we have two separate documents that we'd like to go over with you. And they look a little different than what is in the main document. So let's first go through, and we just want to make sure that you've seen that we made the changes that this group highlighted last week, last month, I mean, even though Michelle actually did them on the spot. It might have been one, a couple of little rewording, something, but... So we'll go through that, and then we'll go back to the other two sections.
Okay. I'm going to highlight about 10 changes that we've made. Four of them are the same, actually. We'll start on page five, on the amended version, Section 4B. Top of page five, in yellow you'll see, "The annual budget, as adopted by a two-thirds vote of the committee, must be approved by a simple majority vote at both town meetings."
And the issue there is, you wanted to make sure it was clear that it was a simple majority at the town meetings, which is the law, so that clarifies it.
Also on page five, Section 2, I'm sorry, Section 5B1, on the operating costs, "The operating cost shall include all costs except capital, debt, and transportation costs, as defined in Section 5C, D, and E, which shall include interest on temporary notes issued by the district in anticipation of revenue."
The issue there is, in several cases, as you know, we originally thought that transportation would be part of the operating budget, and we agreed last time in meeting with Christine and Ruth that that would not be included in operating costs, which is the case in most school districts. And as far as the year-end reports and everything, it's a little cleaner to keep that separate. So in several places, we've deleted, we've said that transportation is now not part of operating costs. Ruth, I mean, Christine, you want to...
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
On all transportation or just non-mandated transportation?
All transportation.
All transportation?
So what will happen is, whatever the cost of the transportation is, minus whatever Chapter 71 reimbursement we get, then that'll be assessed to the town. Separate, outside of the... It's still, the actual expenditure is part of the operating cost, but I'm just going to break out that as another assessment.
It's not going to be a separate line item? Not like, it'll be... The school assessment will include mandated busing, even part that the state doesn't pay for. The only thing that's broken out separately is non-mandated busing.
No, and also the regular. So, in other words, the expenditure for the non-mandated and the mandated busing will all be part of the expenditure and the operating cost, but then when I send you, when I send the towns assessments, it'll be separated from the operating cost. It's going to be exactly the way I do it now, except it'll literally show you, transportation minus the Chapter 71, and that'll give a figure, and then it'll be split 60-40 between the two towns.
Okay.
It's just another invoice. That's all.
No, I'm just talking to my finance committee.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure we're comfortable with it.
Page six, Section 5B2. This formula is illustrated below. Operating budget, which excludes capital, debt, and transportation, is the change.
It's all the same. We don't have to hopefully keep...
Also on page six, Section, just the paragraph below that, "Including out-of-district pupils." We just cleaned up some of that language on four instances, so you'll see it there. In the next paragraph, also, we'll use the term "including out-of-district pupils" for the second time. And if you turn over on page seven, both under Section 62, once again, "The resident pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district, including out-of-district pupils," is restated in that one as well.
So we just changed the order of the sentence, just, we thought it was a little more succinct. It's the same concept, to include the out-of-district pupils.
And twice more at the bottom of page seven, under debt, Section 2, "The resident pupil enrollment, including out-of-district pupils in all member towns in the district on October 1st," is stated twice in that section as well. Page eight, under 9E, "Transportation. The amount of Chapter 71 transportation reimbursement will be subtracted from the cost of pupil transportation, and this amount will be assessed to the towns based on pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district on October 1 of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed."
We worked with Christine on this language, and this is what you're doing here now, what Christine is doing, so we just wanted to make it clear.
And those are the updates from...
There is one other update. Section F, where it says, Section 2...
Yes.
The installments no later than the first day of August, November, February, and that used to be April.
Yes.
But I had a request from Whitman to move it to May, because that's when their taxes are due, and I believe that's the same with Hanson, so...
Right.
It's fine, fine with the treasurer, so...
That's reflected in the new document, so, thank you.
Just makes it easier, because they end up paying it 10 or 12 days late, so this way, they'll get it to us right on time.
Yes, isn't it?
So before we go into those other two sections, are there any issues that we need to talk about, the rest of the agreement? Okay, so, you take out the one at the top, it says, "Lease language." Whitman-Hanson Regional Agreement, lease language. So Chris Lynch, both last week and today, expressed the notion that what you have in your agreement is not illegal, but she feels that it is very confining. And that is, it basically said that if a town is going to have a capital improvement in one of your elementary schools or middle schools, it has to be considered a debt. And as Christine said to me today, there are certainly occasions if, say, you needed $8,000 to renovate a couple of bathrooms, the town might say, "We have that in free cash," or in their budget someplace. So your current language basically says it has to be considered a debt, and it would have to go to a town meeting for a vote. So that still can happen. This doesn't prevent you from the selectmen from saying, "We're going to take the $8,000 or $100,000, whatever it is, to the town for a vote." But it does not require that to happen, especially if it's a small amount. I think Christine, you gave me an example today of sometimes when that happens at the town...
Yes, sometimes there's emergency situations, and we reach out to the selectmen at either town if it needs to be done prior to town meeting, and they agree to it, because they already have a funding source. So then, at the town meeting, it would be a reimbursement for a project that was already done that needed to be done, say, in December, and we know we're not going to have another meeting until May. That's what we've done in the past, which has worked fine, so...
Yeah, we've had a few, I think, roof situations where I think we needed, like, $16,000 or something like that.
Right.
And on my board, we agreed to it, that we would put it in the special town meeting, before our town meeting, and reimburse the schools for it. We just took it out of our...
Yeah, the rooftop units that went with...
Yeah, rooftop, yeah. I mean, it needed to get done prior to school year, so those things have to be done.
Technically, Chris Lynch was saying that you couldn't do that, according to your current wording. So we tried to make it a little more general, so that it, that can happen like that.
So we can continue to do it that way, in emergencies?
Yes, especially if you approve this language in here, then you definitely can. So we'll just talk about the few little changes in here. They're not highlighted in yellow, but in the third paragraph that starts, "The leases shall contain provisions," you'll see there are two words that were added here. "So authorizing the district to make minor repairs and minor improvements or alterations to the buildings or any part thereof, the district shall pay all ordinary expenses of maintaining and operating the buildings." And the issue there was, what, if the towns are authorizing the school district to do general maintenance, could it be construed that general maintenance would be $150,000 roof? That that's maintaining the building? Well, I don't think anybody thinks that that would be maintaining the building, but we were encouraged to put those words in, to make it more clear that it's the general day-to-day maintenance of the building and not major maintenance of the building.
I thought, once an issue becomes more than a certain amount, it's not, it's considered a major project. You know what I mean? I mean, wasn't it 5,000, something like that?
That was the definition of a capital repair, was it?
Right, capital repair.
An amount of $5,000 or greater in the original agreement.
Still there in the next section, right?
Yes.
So basically, it says...
So again, and you see in blue there that we have stricken the words that say that it has to go to the town for a vote, because that'll be up to the selectmen. And Chris Lynch said, "The regional agreement should not be telling the selectmen how they handle a request for a capital project."
Wow.
So...
Thank you.
That...
Some of them don't like that.
The district would say, "This is..."
Not all of us.
"...this is what we need or want, and the selectmen will handle it. And if they want to handle it out of free cash or whatever, that's one thing. If they want it to go to a town meeting, then they can."
That's...
Yes?
Good question. That does not take the district's right away from placing an article at town meeting.
No. No. So, again, the school committee would send an article to the selectmen, and the selectmen could say, "Oh, yeah, we can handle that, because it's $8,000, $10,000, or, no, it's $150,000, it's going to have to go through the debt process and maybe a debt exclusion either."
Gives you flexibility. It lends to the flexibility of the agreement.
Right, that's exactly what it does. On the second page, you see at the end, it's the same thing. We've stricken, it says, "Approval of the voters will be required in order for the work to proceed." And again, about your elementary schools and middle schools, it's just leaving it up to the selectmen of how they want to handle it. So those are basically the issues that she has.
Can I just ask a question? There's, we talk about minor repairs, minor improvements, and ordinary expenses in Section B, but then, Section 3, Section 5C3, we specifically set the limit for capital costs. Do we need to bring, do we need to bring that language together, right? Because could someone say, "Yeah, it's $7,000, but that's a minor repair, that's not capital costs."
We've always used the $5,000 as a threshold.
Right, but the way this is written, right? You've got one paragraph that basically says, "The schools have to do minor repairs and minor improvements." You've got another paragraph that says, "Capital costs over $5,000." There's nothing that says anything over 5. It's considered a capital cost, right? It's just the language isn't consistent?
I see.
We could define a minor repair or improvement as any repair improvement that does not exceed $5,000.
What do you think, Christine?
I'm just worried it's not consistent.
It does refer to Section 3B, that...
The only thing, I understand where you're coming from, Chris, but I think with this, we want to be able to go to the selectmen if it is over $5,000. That's what this whole paragraph is about, right? Mac?
Mm-hmm.
So...
So if you added that language, and the repair was $7,000, you would lose this opportunity to have that...
I think that's how I read it. Is that, am I right?
Well, in other words, we're just, to define what is a capital repair, and what is a minor, you know, what's considered to be a minor maintenance, you know, because theoretically, you could say, well, you spend more than $5,000 a year on fertilizing, you know, the fields.
Because, to be honest, I'd argue, right here, it says, "Or alterations to the building." I'd argue, I don't care if you're changing a window, that technically is a capital improvement, right? So, I mean...
But if it's under $5,000, it'd be borne by the district.
Right.
And that's...
Which is why I think if you just put a definition in there of less than $5,000, or something that brings it together...
Well, you could add it in and say, "The lease should contain provisions authorizing the district to make minor repairs and minor improvements or alterations to the building that do not exceed $5,000."
Right, that's what I, definitely, I said it. Say that, Michelle?
But then if it's $8,000... Well, either that, or you've got to make sure the $5,000's in your leases, right? Because it does say, "The leases shall contain provisions," so there's two ways to...
Right, it's either in the lease or...
It's either in the lease or it's in the agreement.
If it goes $7,000?
What if, I don't, what if the district, what if something was $6,000 or $5,500, and the district wanted to take care of it? And that...
Right, which sometimes we do.
That language would prohibit that.
Well, but wait, are we talking about the actual making, correcting, actually doing the repair or the reimbursement thereof? Both? Because, right, the lease says to make minor repairs, we're talking about making the minor improvements, not reimbursement.
Right.
Right.
Now, what we're saying is, if we limit that, the district cannot make...
We need to define, then, minor repairs or improvements, or define what a $5,000 capital item is.
Because right now, the way this reads, all the capital expenditures are going to be reimbursed, regardless of amount.
Like, how much did we spend on paint last year? You know, in painting hallways and classrooms, we probably spent more than $5,000.
Right.
Wouldn't that be maintenance?
That's maintenance.
Right, that's maintenance. But the way...
And it's not an individual item, right? So it's maintenance.
You're talking about windows. I could see, like, you just turn around and say, "Okay, we need windows on one side of the building, because either they're worn more because of the weathering system, so we need, for the high school, we need $35,000 to repair one side of all these certain floor windows." That's a capital repair.
Yep.
But if somebody throws a ball through the window sill and breaks a couple of window panes, that's a maintenance repair. I look at it, oh, insurance recovery, but I mean, or something like that, or wearing of the window for some particular reason.
It's worked for us that we've defined a capital repair as a singular item that exceeds $5,000. Why don't we just stick that definition somewhere, make sure we have it, you know, and that'd be borne by the member town in which the building presides, or split, you know, between the two. If we just define it a little bit more readily, then we know it's not...
I mean, let me ask a question, right? It's legit, because this just happened to a building that a buddy of mine manages, but we have a 70-mile-per-hour wind gust that blows in the front door of Conley Elementary, and that expense is $6,500. Is that maintenance that the school district is now responsible for? Or is that a capital expenditure to replace that door?
It's an insurance claim.
It's an insurance claim.
Put that aside for a second, though, all right? But, I mean, what is it? Is it maintenance or a capital expenditure?
That would be a capital, well, take a water heater. Water heater goes at Conley. All right, it's a Renai water heater that's, don't ask me...
Twenty-five grand.
$24,000.
That's a capital...
Okay, that's a capital item.
Part goes in the part $6,000. Is that maintenance, or is that a capital item?
What is?
I said, "A part goes in the part $6,000." You don't have to replace the, is that maintenance, or is that a...
That's a capital item.
It's a capital item, because you always classify things over $5,000 as a capital item. I'm just concerned, you've introduced language that says, "Minor repairs and minor maintenance," with no definition of where that stops.
I think it's ambiguous on purpose, to be perfectly honest with you.
It's not necessarily a good thing, though, 10 years from now.
Well, this is, well, we're talking about an emergency repair. We're not talking about a capital project. We're talking about an expenditure that was unforeseen. A capital project is something you're planning for, hopefully.
Right.
And you're putting in a plan, and you're going to put aside that amount of money to do that project later.
We don't...
This paragraph deals with emergency repairs. Like you say, a boiler goes, you didn't know it was going to happen, you need to fix it right away. Selectmen are notified, and they say, "Haven't the expense, we'll reimburse at the next town meeting." Right? So that's a totally different issue than, you know, a planned capital expense, in my eye. But I think if you add that $5,000 in that paragraph, you're limiting...
We're going to be restricted as well.
You're going to be restricted. I think you're restricting, yeah. Emergency, emergency.
So do we go back to the other paragraph and just clarify that says, "A capital repair can relate to any expense, including minor repairs in excess of $5,000?"
Yeah, I think that's one way to do it, right? You take the same language that's here, and you add it to the paragraph C. I'm just trying to make the language consistent. I think if you don't make the language consistent...
No, it's a good point.
It always brings in opportunity for someone...
Right.
What did they mean? What was the spirit? We all know what the spirit is, because right now, today's practice is, anything over 5 grand, we go back to the towns and we expend.
Yeah, but actually, it sort of says it, though.
Is that because you use common sense, Chris? And we can't count on the people that look at this 10 or 15 years down the road to use common sense?
Not based on what I've seen on Facebook in the last two days. Right?
Well, then, there you go. It's got to be fixed.
Yeah, but wait a second, wait a second. "Each member town shall be responsible for paying the capital costs, as detailed in Section 3B above." So that goes back to that other paragraph.
Well, there's no capital costs in 3B, though.
Okay.
That's my point, right? Where we're going back to language that's not there.
But Section th...
Okay, "above for its respective elementary and middle schools. As relates to the elementary or middle school in each town, capital costs shall include but not be limited to such expenses above as exceeding $5,000."
But "not limited to" is the key word there.
Right.
But if we want to clarify, can't we just say, which, add another sentence that says, "This will also include minor repairs, minor improvements, or ordinary expenses in excess of $5,000." Is that what you're after, Chris? I mean, it's anything above $5,000.
It's really two different...
Yeah, but it says, "Such expenses described above."
It's two different things.
Two different sections, totally two different subjects.
Because there is going to be times that the district picks up the cost of something that's more than $5,000. It happens...
Picks up the cost and doesn't get reimbursed?
That's correct. Yep.
Like, what?
Just like we just said, painting, other...
You know, if you have a paint project, there was a gray area, I know, what was it? So I know I brought it up to you and Ernie. We had one bill was $4,700 to fix something, and then there was a subsequent bill for another $300 or $400, or something like that. I want to say it was on a chairlift, if I remember correctly. And it was a different circumstance, even though it was within a time period that was close. And I'm like, well, why aren't we charging? It happened to be the town of Hanson, because it was in the Hanson School that left, you know. Why aren't we charging them? You know, it was a capital item, and it wasn't, it didn't exceed it, because it was two separate repairs, not one, so...
And again, I don't, I don't...
This is worth 50 years.
I mean, I don't know that it has to be here, but it's not spelled out in the leases, or it's not spelled out somewhere.
Either that, or just add, you know, I mean, it says, "As described above," and it references 3B above. So it does reference the, and maybe it's something for the lawyer to draw up, to reference it properly, but I think it does go back to referencing it.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't love the fact that we don't use the term "capital expenditures" anywhere in one paragraph, and that's what we're saying they are in the next paragraph.
Would it clarify enough, just to take out what's in parentheses? That was in your, that is in your current, just a different reference, it's referencing 4B, but, because they are two separate things. This is, the first page, the B is about minor repairs, and Section 3 is about capital costs.
It's two different things.
So they are two different things, yes.
So if they're two different things, and the school system's still entitled to reimbursement for those items over $5,000 that aren't capital costs, then I think we need to specifically spell those out.
Wow.
Right? Because where's the agreement that says, "If you do a maintenance, an emergency maintenance item that's over 5 grand, we're going to reimburse you?"
Well, here's...
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
Maintenance capital, I know it's fine line there.
But if we had rules in place that had said it was a single item, or any two items within a one-year timeframe, maybe we would have been going back and billing the town of Hanson, right? If we had the right definition. We just don't have a definition.
Third paragraph in the middle, under Section 3B, "The committee shall also be authorized to make major improvements, alterations, additions, or capital expenditures to town-owned schools, but only after the notification of the appropriate member's town's selectmen." So what do you do when you have a water heater that's $24,000, it's leaking? You fire off a letter to the town, but do you let it keep leaking, or do you get it fixed the next day?
We fix it.
Fix it.
We fix it, same as we do right now.
Right. But this says that you can only do that after notification, is that what it...
You just call up Mike McPewee, you call up Frank Lynam and say...
Okay.
It's broke.
It's broke, we've got to fix it. That's what we currently do right now, because they might not get the letter for two days, so we make a phone call.
Okay.
Pay me now, pay me later.
I see, I see it's fine the way it is.
I think it's fine the way it is.
I was just going to make a quick observation, and I think it might be okay the way it is. When I look at it, Bob, the problem that I see is, we're looking at Section 3, we turn the piece of paper over, and now we're looking at Section 5, and they're so close. Where's Section 4? Chris looked it up, Section 4 is all about the budget. So Section 3 and Section 5 aren't close to one another, and I can see what Chris is saying, but the common sense would tell you that it's...
Two definitions.
...two different things. And, you know, there's a possibility of maybe taking out, or getting the wording right, but, I mean, you put Section 4 in there, and you're going to read through this whole thing, you have a big thing on the budget in Section 4. So you've just read Section 3, now you go to the budget in Section 4, and now you've come into a totally separate thing on Section 5, which explains how much, you know, it would be up to the $5,000. which explains how much, you know, it would be up to the five thousand dollars. So I would think it wouldn't be that confusing if anyone read it.
Common sense obviously should prevail, but as was said earlier, that's not the case usually.
Well, why don't we just define an ordinary expense of maintaining and operating the building shall be, you know, the day-to-day cleaning, whatever we're gonna.
We don't wanna restrict ourselves that much, I don't think.
Or, or then you just define a repair. You know, minor alteration and minor repair shall be a repair that does not exceed five thousand dollars. Boom. Just do it that way.
If you put a number on minor repairs, you could have, you know, like you said, paint could cost ten thousand dollars. If you're painting a whole, you know.
But that's not a repair, that's, that's maintenance.
That's maintenance, all right, repair.
In other words, we're talking just.
I think we're talking repairs.
Right, so you're going to, you're defining a repair as a capital item. You know, if it's, if it's in excess of five thousand dollars or four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
If the chairlift was so bad that it needed a new one, it would be over the five thousand dollars, they'd go.
So in three B, you would just say.
If it's a minor repair for three hundred, then it's not.
Well, it was major repair, but, well, or considered in this case, minor repair is forty-seven hundred.
And it would still be under the five.
It was under the five.
Right, wherever you get to, if you're under five, you're under five. It doesn't matter if it's forty-nine hundred, you're under five, that's the number.
So on three B, if you just said capital cost shall, capital cost, minor repairs, or capital cost shall include but not be limited to expenses. See, we're kind of, I don't know, we're defining capital costs here.
Hmm.
Right, as anything over five grand.
Right, but all you need to say here is. Where is it? Where it says minor, minor improvements or alterations to the building shall be defined as any, or appear, minor appears, improvements or alterations, and in parentheses even, you know, any expense less than five thousand dollars. Any singular expense.
Yeah, but I, I agree to the point earlier. That paragraph is intended to allow you to actually go do the work.
Yes.
I think, to me, the place for that definition is in, in three B when you talk about reimbursement. Section five.
Section five.
Right.
Because three B is.
Right. Three B is authorizing you to go ahead and do the work.
And wouldn't that mean that the school system would never do anything over five thousand dollars? If you said that?
Right, sometimes we do.
Yeah, right, so I think that would prevent that.
The other part of it is that the last, the sentence in the large paragraph, it says, approved projects will not be a part of the regional school district budget. So projects that aren't approved would. You know, so I think that, that really covers it. I mean, it goes to the selectmen, they decide, yeah or nay, are we gonna reimburse, yes or no? And if it's no.
Well, I wanna be careful there. If the Whitman, or if the Hanson Board, as a Whitman taxpayer, the Hanson Board of Selectmen says, I'm not paying for that.
Yeah, but this doesn't say that they have to say that they'll pay for it. It just says that they have to be notified.
Hopefully, they'll pay for it.
In other words, the way it reads is that only after notification, not them giving approval, just that they're notified.
Right, if you've got a boiler that's gone, you have to fix it, whether we say we're gonna pay for it or not.
So here's the point, Rick asked this last week, right?
Right.
You said, why isn't it ten thousand dollars? So Hanson has a change in their Board of Selectmen, they say, you know what? We think this should be ten grand. And I'm using Hanson because I'm from Whitman, could be Whitman Selectmen, right? I think this should be ten grand and you know what? I don't care what the agreement says. I'm not authorizing reimbursement for any minor repair unless it's more than ten grand. Board of Selectmen doesn't reimburse it, how do we deal with that?
The Board of Selectmen doesn't have any choice. They have a signed agreement by previous Boards of Selectmen that's binding. It's not really their discussion.
No, they don't, because it doesn't spell out, it doesn't spell out that minor repairs over five thousand dollars will be reimbursed.
Then you put a article on the annual town meeting and you argue the point.
Yeah, cutting it to.
No, I'm not. I'm just saying, it's, it's not clear and I don't love it.
Again, I'll throw out, and I won't say it again, but if we took away that parentheses in three and five, C, three, so that there's no reference back to that, would that take away some of the confusion? And so it's considered a separate issue?
It really does spell it out.
It says, as relates to elementary and middle schools in each town, capital costs shall include but not be limited to such expenses described above as exceeding five thousand dollars.
You have to get rid of above because there's a section in between, right? So that has to go anyway.
Oh, yeah, I haven't thought about that.
We have to change the wording anyway because that doesn't make sense.
What, say that again?
You have to get rid of such expenses described above because there's a section four in between the two sections.
Right, just needs to say three B.
Get rid of above.
Yeah, you gotta get rid of above.
Unless you speculate.
Described in section three B.
Three is still above five.
If someone would think.
Quite logically.
Very good.
But in contract jargon, it means what's right above it.
All right, so we gotta ditch above.
Yep. I would just replace it with the described.
I think if, I think if you actually put, I think if you actually, actually put to such expenses described in section three B, and maybe you wanna put excluding minor maintenance or whatever, right? Because we don't wanna get into the paintish or whatever it was.
No, but this, but this, but this spells it out. Such expenses described above as exceeding, and as exceed, that probably should be as exceeding five thousand dollars. It spells it out. Just, and you just, if you wanna tie it a little bit better than above, I think it ties it right into it.
But the section, would it, you know, instead of saying above, put in section so and so, described in section so and so.
Yeah, for its respective elementary and middle schools, as it relates to elementary and middle schools in each town, capital costs shall include but not be limited to such expenses described in section three B as exceeding five thousand dollars.
You told me you wanted to exclude maintenance from that, right? You wanted to exclude things like paint.
I don't think maintenance are emergency repairs, right? That's what section three is. And, and painting and maintenance aren't capital costs either.
Yeah, and I think.
So that doesn't apply to.
Because it has that but not limited to, I think that's the legal one.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Right, because the school's gonna come back and say, well, it says not limited to. It's ten thousand dollars for the replacement part on the Renai, reimburse. And the towns might say no, or say, the school department say, right here, it says but not limited to, so you have to.
I mean, painting, you know, is something that we do. You know, it's part of the operating budget, it's part of the, well, the wax is different, but part of, you know, the carpet cleaning, you know, we contract out for carpet cleaner. I think that costs more than five grand a year when we clean the carpets over the summer.
I don't love the language, but I think anything we change is gonna make something else worse. I can't come up with anything that makes sense to change, too.
Well, this happened, and I know we're trying to straighten out what has happened in the previous years, but I mean, ninety-nine point nine tenths percent, when you go to the Board of Selectmen, or you go to a town meeting and you get up and you read it out, we put in a Renai water heater, twenty-four thousand dollars. All those in favor, they pay it. You know, I mean, it's all the same pockets, guys.
Since I've been here, we've never had an issue calling either Board of Selectmen if there's been an emergency, if a water heater died or, you know, whether it was a twelve thousand dollar issue or a ninety thousand dollar issue.
We have to fix it.
I mean, we had an issue at Hanson Middle School a few years ago that the insurance only covered a certain amount. And we, you know, went to the Selectmen and told them we needed an additional ninety thousand. And they, they agreed to do it and then at the next town meeting, they, we did the reimbursement on the town meeting floor. And I've been here six years and I've never had a problem. They've never said no. On an emergency repair.
Should we say leave it the way it is written?
I think you have to get rid of above.
Get rid of above and add C.
Get rid of above and tie it to three B.
Yeah.
Tie it to three B.
Everybody okay with that? You hearing it, Joe?
Screen and cross out.
Yep.
That's all you need me to do, right?
Yep, actually.
Can you make it blue? No, down, down in the red.
That'll be.
Yeah, get rid of that and then down in the red where it says described above, it should be described as in.
As exceeding.
Such expenses described in three B as exceed. Section three B, yeah, same as above there, or same as it's noted there, and then.
Do the same thing there.
Right, it says.
Just take out the two aboves.
Yes.
Yep.
Such expenses described.
Exceeding at I N G.
Well, if you put, if you add I N G, you have to take out the as.
Yeah.
It's grammatically correct the way it is, but we can, we can make it exceeding, but you have to take out the as, I would say. Which, so whichever you want. Take out the word as, right, right, right there.
Well, yeah, it's, it's either or, right? You can either leave it.
Yep.
Yeah, nothing's gonna change in section three.
We're not taking out the as or we need to take out the as.
As is coming out. Everybody okay with that? Okay? Okay, so does that finish that, this section?
Okay.
What's next?
All right, we have one other section which I think will be simpler, about the withdrawal language.
We'll see about that.
Is that a challenge?
No, no, not for me.
Or maybe you took mine as a challenge. So withdrawal, your withdrawal language talks about if one town, one member town withdraws from the region. And as Chris Lynch pointed out very clearly, if one town withdraws, you have no more region anymore, right? So this whole section, the region is totally gone. Well, you can't, you can't have a region with one town. What happens, what happens if a town wants to withdraw but still keep the high school regionalized?
Like we used to.
You took out the language last time of taking out K to eight. Okay. So. So who owns the high school then? Okay, well, that, that's, this talks about that. So this has been rewritten, and you'll see the first thing in yellow on the first line. It says, the withdrawal of a member town from a district will result in the dissolution of the district. So that, she wanted us to make that clear. So then, we can do as much with this as you want, but let's go down to the red, the red words in the, under procedure, because in terms of section A, we didn't change anything that's in your current agreement other than what's in yellow.
Want me to read this?
Sure.
The selectmen of the non-withdrawing member town shall include in the warrant for the next annual or special town meeting, call for the purpose of an article, the terms of withdrawal. Such amendment shall become effective on a July first, no less than one full year after the approval of the non-withdrawing member town, after the acceptance by each town to be a majority vote at a town meeting as aforesaid and after approval of the commissioner, no later than the preceding December thirty-first.
I think I remember saying at the beginning, if you're changing your regional agreement without adding or deleting any member towns, that could be done anytime. You could theoretically approve this at your next month's town meeting or May's town meeting, and it can start on July first. But if you're adding or deleting a member town, it has to be done with all the approvals by a December thirty-first for it to happen the next July first. So that's why that language is there.
Obligations of member towns. In addition to other terms and requirements which the committee shall include in the amendment, the member towns, if the district is dissolved, will be responsible for the following. One, payment of all operating costs for each year town is liable as a member of the district. Two, payments beyond the time of dissolution for each member town's share of the indebtedness of the district, which is outstanding at the time of such dissolution, and for interest thereon to the same extent and in the same manner though each town had not withdrawn from the district. Three, other liabilities incurred during all times that each town was a member of the district. Example, OPEB, other post-employment benefits. And four, for the costs, including legal fees, that accrue to the district as a result of the process created by the withdrawing member town. All expenses related to the dissolution of the district will be borne by the member town which initiates the dissolution of the district. Approval of withdrawal.
Well, just, I'll stop in there. So these are, these four things are things that this, that DESE has encouraged us to include in all regional agreements going forward. I think I mentioned that out at the Gateway Regional School District, they didn't specifically say anything about OPEB responsibilities. And Worthington was allowed to leave the district. And there's been three, there's been a court case, it's gone to three levels, gone to the Supreme Court of Massachusetts. And the Supreme Court said, well, it wasn't in the regional agreement, so Worthington is not gonna have to pay the OPEB responsibilities of all those teachers who were part of the region when they were part of the region. They've just been absolved from that. So we wanna make sure that that doesn't happen here or any other place. So I was trying to spell out all the possibilities of liabilities that would happen if your region were to be dissolved.
Approval of withdrawal. A request to withdraw shall become effective only if the amendment to the agreement is approved by a majority vote of the committee, is approved by a majority vote at an annual or special town meeting in the member towns, is approved by the commissioner, and the dissolution of the district can only become effective on a July first, no less than one full year after the completion of these requirements. That, when you dissolve that, it doesn't have to go to a town meeting vote? Not just the town, not a town meeting, excuse me, town-wide vote?
No, each town would vote on it.
Not town meeting, I'm talking about a town ballot vote.
No.
No? It'll be a town meeting?
Town meeting could vote to dissolve.
Plus the OPEB liability is over fifty million, so probably, yeah.
That's huge.
Those first four requirements, it should not be easy to dissolve.
No, I, I agree with you.
And those first four, as I look at, would probably stop any of these two towns from ever doing it. Just the OPEB liability, if you broke, I don't know how you'd break it up.
I don't know either, I guess we'd have to.
You'd have to be on a payment plan, I would imagine. Yeah, I mean, it'd be, it'd be financial problems for the town, either town, to try and head on its own and build buildings and do things and then incur that OPEB liability.
For OPEB, I think the town would be responsible for all the elementary and middle school teachers that work in their town.
Right, and the high school.
Plus their share of.
High school.
Sixty-forty split of the high school teachers forever, for as long as you've been in the, oh, it'd be a big number.
There's more teachers than Whitman. Whitman Middle School has more teachers than Hanson Middle School, so.
Well, the whole thing would be, you'd break that out by town and then you'd take the high school and divide it sixty-forty, probably. But I mean, I don't see any of that happening.
E, upon the effective date of dissolution of the district, terms of office of all members serving on the committee shall terminate. F, money incumbent from the member towns for payment of obligations as outlined in section nine C above shall be used only for such purpose and until so used shall be deposited in a trust which is established at the time of dissolution.
Most, most regional agreements would say if there are more than two towns in it, that it would be put in a trust held by the district. But there's no more district if one town pulls out. So that state, Christine and her colleagues said that we would have to set up a, a trust to help to hold the money. And so, and the other obstacle is technically if the town pulled out, they would be responsible. if the town pulled out, they would be responsible for putting all of the OPEB responsibilities in a trust immediately. So your towns would have to borrow all that money to put in a trust to pay that, that's another huge obstacle.
Division of assets, both towns will be entitled to any assets that need to be divided between the towns, to be negotiated between the member towns' public school committees and Selectmen.
So, that's kind of new language that we've worked on, and this is something for you to discuss. Our assumption is that the negotiations would be between, now, if the region is dissolved, there would be a public school committee for each town, there'll be a Hanson Public School Committee and a Whitman Public School Committee, and we assume that those school committees and the Selectmen from each of the towns would negotiate how to divide up the assets. And the most places don't want to put, make that too specific now, because who knows twenty years from now what circumstances there may be, and leave it up to those people who were in power at the time, but that's up to you all.
That's it.
Okay, we have to take a vote on the amendments to the regional agreement. Is there any, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You looking for?
I'm sorry, I, I hesitate to bring this up about the lease, the terms of lease. We have the lease agreement, in the document as it's written right now, it says leases shall be for twenty years. And we know that you have special legislation, and when we talked with the state, they made an interesting distinction. They said, "Is it permissible, is the law say it's permissible to have more than twenty years, or does it say you have to have more than twenty years?" And the way I, we read it, it's permissible. It says, "Notwithstanding the provisions of section fourteen C of chapter seventy-one of the general laws or any other general or special law in the country, the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District is hereby authorized to lease property for a term in excess of twenty years." So it doesn't say it has to be, it just says you can do it. So I hesitate to bring this up, but it says, right now, what we have written in there is twenty years, so the question is, do you want to change that in any way?
Shouldn't we have a match?
Pardon me?
Shouldn't we have a match? Would you say, what do you mean, what, when you say it's, where are you pointing? Where's the twenty years specified? Where are you looking at?
Actually, it's on that, that paragraph about the lease, leases.
Section three.
Three B.
So rather than say, "Each lease shall be for a term of twenty years," wouldn't we just simply be able to say, "At least a term of twenty years"?
You could, that's why I'm asking you.
And then we're covered, right?
Yeah, you could do whatever you want there. The question is, someone was asking, what are the, I think Fred was saying, what are the pros and cons of that? The only pro that I can think of, to limit it at twenty, is it forces people to look, talk about it every twenty years to see if there are any others. Maybe you don't want to talk about it.
Twenty versus fifty, that's a long time.
Stupid question. It won't be me. Where are we at right now with our current leases? How much time is remaining? How long do they run? Anybody have a copy of that?
Yes, I do.
I have it with me, so. Not yet.
It says, "The term of this lease commences on July first, nineteen ninety-two." Yeah, that was what it is.
Yeah, that's when the re-regionalized.
No, no, this is for, um... Which building? It, this is, it says for twenty years in here, so in two thousand twelve, it ran out. Okay, so we're tenants at will right now?
Get out of my building!
I think it's twenty-two.
Well, by adopting this regional agreement.
One oh two, one twelve.
Yeah.
Twenty years, so.
Thirty-two?
So, I just, yeah, I, I didn't want to have you think afterwards that we didn't raise that, because you have.
Well, there is pros and cons, I mean, if you leave the twenty year lease in there, we have to discuss it in twenty years, which probably, I don't think many of us will be here in twenty years to discuss. Or if you say at least twenty years, then they don't even, that's saying that we don't, they don't have to look at it, whoever's sitting here. Is that right?
Yeah, at least twenty years is a minimal amount being at least.
Right.
And then it doesn't specify.
Right.
Right.
A termination point.
Right.
It says at least.
I mean, we're gonna, I would think he's sending this all to our attorney anyways.
Yes.
Should we maybe just ask his opinion?
What I think is partly what you want, you want to have a limited date.
I think we want the flexibility, you want the flexibility, because on any given lease, if we're blowing through twenty years just like that.
Right. We also know that we can return a building to a town with, well, what day, what notice, was it six months?
Hundred, yeah.
Hundred eighty days' notice, I mean.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's not a real big problem. Could you have it read from the date of the most recent regional agreement, twenty years from that date? Well, when we, when we vote this agreement, I would, I would say that it starts the new lease period.
Right, you should sign.
When this agreement is voted and finally approved, you're on a brand-new agreement with a brand-new lease.
But do you still want to add at least twenty years in that, instead of each lease shall be for a term of twenty years? Or do you want to put each lease shall be for a term for at least twenty years?
I would think at least.
It can't hurt you, because if you want, either way, at least leaves it open-ended.
Right.
You can close it at any time you want, like Fred just said, we just.
Well, we're going to have to worry about it.
What does the, what does the lease do for us, other than allow us to probably take out insurance and things like that, right? I mean, that's really all it does, right, because we can return a building in six months and.
We can return a building, the building is owned by the town.
And if a town withdraws, the lease is broken anyway, right?
I think it may flip some liability to us instead of the town as well.
It's just, uh...
A lease usually covers the tenant more than it does the owner.
Right, right.
I mean, leases originally were made, Chris, as I understand it, fifty years ago, so you could borrow.
Right, we pay nothing.
It's really just so that we have legal entitlement to maintain the building and get insurance. I think it's a mechanism for the utilization.
Right. If we need to borrow money.
Which is why not just go. So, so then, I, then I think it becomes a legal question, right? So, do we just make it so it's open-ended, and now we're covered forever, and we never have to redo them?
Right. To the best of my knowledge, we're the only district that has that ability.
Yeah.
Might as well use it.
Might as well keep it, right?
I'll give it up.
Signing six leases or whatever it is every. Well, yeah, who's going to mark their calendar for twenty years from now?
Chris, Chris, this agreement was ninety-two, and it's supposed to be reviewed so many years, and, and nobody's touched it until we looked at it one day and said, "This needs to be cleaned up."
Mr. Mincello, Mr. Finley, and myself did have a review committee.
I mean, they, I, I think as long as the lawyer's fine with an open-ended, you know, in excess of twenty years.
Yeah.
Were you?
Just go for it.
Yeah.
Were you not over here? I don't remember you being there.
Each of your leases are eleven pages long, which is probably the longest in the whole state.
Which is why we don't want to have to look at them. It's even more of a.
At least for at least twenty years.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we ready to, uh, look at the amendments and take a vote on them? We, I basically should have had a motion in a second before we get into all this discussion.
I, I make a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
Thank you, seconds available? Any further discussion?
Hold on, he's got my notes.
Very well done.
I did.
Excuse me, Fred and Chris. Chris?
Howard.
Right?
Yes.
And what's the motion?
To approve the amendments as stated.
Any further discussion? Now's the time. She'll point. Now's the time, Fred.
One bit of discussion, and this is obviously subject to approval by our attorneys, the towns' attorneys.
And the state's attorney.
State's attorney. And then, of course, Tom, you can all back.
Any further discussions?
You write all that down?
Yeah, district, town, and state, subject to the approval of legal counsel.
Yep.
You got all that, Joe?
You underestimate her.
Okay, is there any further discussions before we move to the vote? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Great.
Is there anybody in the public sector that would like to speak?
They're all clamoring for it.
Seeing none? We really don't need a future meeting date, do we?
Unless any of these lawyers come back with something significant, I would say.
If we need, if we have an attorney situation that they don't like some of the language, if the committee will so afford me the opportunity to set up another meeting, to work out any of the kinks that may have to be changed, we will do so and notify you.
We have one in April scheduled, by the way.
Yeah, but that's going to not be, that's going to be too late for town meeting, because town meeting's only a week later.
Christine is wondering about the ninth, isn't that what you?
Yeah, the ninth.
The ninth? Is a fallback?
Yeah, as a fallback if we need it, because the second we can't, and the ninth.
April?
Yeah, if needed.
Okay.
Okay?
If needed.
You'll have to come back from vacation.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for all of the work on this.
This group has been very efficient, we've appreciated working with you.